So we don't wall the wall?
No, we don't wall the wall, but what they want to wall. So they said then after this process, then we can, you know, if we get the bid considered by, then we reapply.
All right, you all join us for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, let's bring the July 21st, 2021 Board of Slumbers meeting to order. We'll start with the July 7th meeting minutes. Everybody get a chance to see the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the July 7th.
Second, any question? So, all in favor? All right, so one of the financial reports, do payroll warrants?
I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant number two.
It's number two, doesn't it? Okay, so here, second?
No, second.
All right, Mark seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, so go to county payable, we have three.
Two, go ahead.
Just in payroll warrant two, right?
So we have county's payroll warrant number 76.
Is it 76?
Oh, yeah, I thought it was an AP three or something.
There's a three.
Isn't that three?
Okay, so we have to split it to the, yeah, the fiscal years. Yeah, so we can do, yeah, we'll do AP 76 in first and then?
Yeah. All right, motion for county's payable number 76.
And the seconds, Tom seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? And we'll go on to AP three.
I make a motion to approve county's payable number three.
Mark seconds, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay. Financial reports, we have the presentations tonight. No presentations. We will have one for the next meeting, just to give you a heads up. The Public Safety and Accessibility Committee conducted a survey that may have seen online and they got a very good response, 136 responses with most of those folks being from the area. So I asked them to give a presentation on that survey and the results and their recommendations as a result of the survey. So that'll be coming up with your August report.
How many responses did that just add?
136.
Which is good for, you know, voluntary survey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty good, so. All right, any citizens comments, general correspondents tonight? Has anybody, has anybody watching?
Yeah, we've got two, nothing, no input.
No hands up?
No hands up.
All right, we'll move along to town manager items.
I've got a few things to report and ask Bob and George to be here for this first item as well. So, as I shared with the board via email, we've had quite a bit of communications with EDA FEMA during the last couple of weeks regarding specifically the wall in our waterfront project, flood wall, and the issue of 13.1 foot elevation versus 11 foot elevation, 5.1 feet versus 3 feet off the ground. So we had a real good meeting that, you know, brought closure on a lot of these issues or at least tentatively brought closure with the, with the two entities. Well, actually, the EDA fellow couldn't be there, I had to brief him later. But two people from FEMA were at that meeting and Evan, Bob, George and I went down to Hopson so we could meet on their fancy communication system, which is what we're going to have here soon. And, as I say, a very positive meeting. And I just want to cover the key points from that meeting. FEMA and EDA want a wall that meets the clomer or conditional letter of map revision requirements. So, I mean, that's high on their priority list. However, it doesn't necessarily have to be part of the first phase. And so what they're saying is, town, get your design work done. Go out for bid with the wall as an alternate bid. And if the combined project, including the wall, exceeds the amount that you have available, then you can proceed with the other improvements, not including the wall. And I took that to mean we could proceed with bidding and construction and, and just starting that whole process, you know, could be, you know, within a year for all those other elements. And then they said, since they really want this flood protection, then you reapply for additional dollars to do the 13.1 foot elevation flood wall. They didn't say we needed a solid wall. So what we've talked about, what we talked about with FEMA and EDA is having a wall that either has transparent, say it's top two feet, or a wall that can be put in place when we know there's going to be flooding from tide or, you know, you know, either through slats or some type of flip up or pull up device. So I think that was, that was pretty cool, that they, they didn't lock us into looking at the solid wall as an alternative. So what we're of a mind to do is not even ask for bids on a solid wall. Just ask for a wall where you can see over the top, you know, except for that rare circumstance where the, the tide comes in four feet higher than it's ever come in before.
Very good question. So if, if we go that route and then the wall would be, you know, like they're recommending, they're still in financially in that first part?
Yes, they are. Matt, that was a key part. They said, yeah, we will pay for the other improvements. We will pay for the pedestrian walkway. We will pay for the overlay on the parking lot. We will pay for the drainage improvements, which is the most expensive part of it. So we had that in an email, but I think you made the point, we need something, we need something with their signature. Yeah, so, yeah, before we put any more money into the project. But I've been, I was, in the prior weeks, I was assured that what we've spent so far for the sewer system and the restroom out of the EDA money, that's going to be reimbursed. They're very slow in providing reimbursement and I've been, I've been after them. You see, you know, we're, we've got about 500,000 spent so far. And I've told them, remember, a small town, I don't have that much cash flow. It needs a, needs a, so we're working on that for now. But, yeah.
So do we, do we need to go back to engineering? Because we've got, you know, the 30% plans have the wall and the park area all set up. How do we, can they separate those two phases easily?
Yeah, so what we could do is we'd separate out the, I think what we'd do is we'd have, I'm not exactly sure, I need to talk to my partners in crime here, but we, we need, I think we need to ask for a, for everything and then we need to ask for an alternate that splits out those in one way or another. You know, splits out the wall from the rest of the project.
I think it's important, though, that that bid goes out and no one. Because I think if we hadn't did them, it's not the best time. And I think I've shared that before, on your project, even on this, you know, January 12th is the time.
Yeah. I hope we can do it in the fall. But here, but that goes into another, I'll go through these other items too. But Bob and George, for the most part, and with some input from me, have put together a detailed description of what Wright Pierce needs to include in its, in its final design. So we have given them, well, we've given them till January 13th, 2022 to have that done. To have that design worked on. Is that, assuming they could make that, but?
He better speed it up.
There, there's a lot of stuff that's got to get done, although quite frankly, when we're at the meeting on Friday, they have a set of 30% drawings that they never share. But basically, a lot of the details have come from the other project that they have, that they've had for 10 years and stuff. So it probably looks more impressive than it really is. But it's, it's, it's nice that, you know, the town has got that at least. And, but to make some of the decisions on the holes, underground drainage system, the wall itself, and just to pick up on what Matt was saying about the transparent section and the solid section, we did discuss amongst ourselves that maybe another alternative would be to make sections of the solid, drop down for a visible section and back up, reduce the amount of transparent wall, which is a big added cost. And can, if that can make the river visible for those people that, you know, feel that it should be, it may be a good compromise to keep the cost down. But that, that's got to be developed pretty early in the game so they can go, you know, get the things done, so it's possible. Maybe that they can get it done by December. We haven't, we haven't got a proposal back though. We're hoping to get it back, I think, so that you?
I can't, just before this meeting, their comments on our proposal.
Oh, yeah, that's what we hope to have. I think you want to have something that you guys can vote on and, and something at the next meeting.
Yeah, I want to have, I want to have the final design agreement for your August fourth meeting.
Now, that would be a three-foot wall, and then we would actually know what that wall is going to be?
That is going to be a, well, the design, once they get the design done, will be a five-foot wall. But a wall, it's either transparent at the top two feet or it folds down and it only becomes a five-foot wall and we know the storm's going to hit.
But it will be very clear to the bidders.
Oh, yes.
I think what needs to happen very soon is for them to present the alternatives of what the wall is, the surface is, what it's lined or what does that need to be done like?
That's, actually, we asked for that in the 60% going.
Well, I think we, Bob, you added in a test two, I think it was, that really wanted the design of the wall to be done very quickly.
Any concern? Okay, so I'll take it, proceed with this. We hadn't gotten Whitman's, Jan Whitman's feedback yet, so I didn't send this to you, but I'll send this, I'll send this out when we make the edits.
Well, I think George is making a good point because it's going to be a lot of discussion around that wall. And soon we get some stuff to talk about, it could take a?
Yeah, and we need to do a public meeting as well.
Yes, yes, yes.
I even suggested to Matt it might be a good idea, such as take a piece of plywood, five feet high, stretch it to the back fence and show a five-foot and cut out a three-foot, just so people can say, oh, yeah, you say five-foot wall.
Yeah, we'll, we'll end that.
You could do that anytime.
Yeah, we'll do that.
I have my hand raised, may I make the comment?
Ask the mic to, I have to hear if he can hear.
Yeah, the input I've had so far is that, among other things, is that EDA is anxious for this wall, is I think it would be a showpiece of their willingness to spur it out of. And we agree this with you folks, it could be a small, whatever it is, for a very long time. So we want to make sure it is the very best we can get. Whether it takes even that point, lines, sort of, whether it's a transparent sections, whatever, whatever it is. I don't think that, we don't want to be explaining, but we don't want to cut corners that could ruin in the future. I am, I was very excited at the conclusion of a couple of telephone calls, which we had with EDA, then leaving FEMA. I think everything's been a positive reaction. And who would have thought two years ago, we would have created this point, protecting downtown and taking out the Hudson.
Can I speak, please? Can you guys hear me?
Hoss has got a question there. Go ahead, Hoss.
You can hear me, okay. I, I think that we need very soon to involve the community in this. Because there are many people who are totally abhor the thought of a wall. And they're saying, it's not my town if we have a wall or whatever. And I think we need to see what the consensus of the whole community is on this or build one before we get too far down the road.
Are you saying they, they abhor the idea of a wall or of a five-foot wall that blocks the view?
Um, just the wall alone, Matt, when I have conversations, the wall, or what I'm, what I'm, look, what, what they're saying, I don't think is as important as the need for us to have a community-wide conversation to get somebody with us.
Yeah, and the only, the only part of that, the only reason we're waiting on that is we need to get a little bit more detail from, from Wright Pierce and Malone in the room so we're not bouncing all over the place for the meeting. I think we need to, to clearly identify for the citizens what the alternatives are.
I agree. I'm just saying, we've got to do it as soon, otherwise we're going to be behind the curve in trying to get, I think we'll be behind the curve in trying to get community agreement.
Okay, just in general, it seems to me that once in a millennium flood level, like, shouldn't, shouldn't this evolve a very prominent kind of a wall? I mean, you don't want a solid wall for a once in a millennium situation. Ideally, you'd add something that would detract and doesn't even have to be mechanical. It could be, you lift it up, lock in place kind of thing. I mean, let's face it, when are we going to need this? Reality is, it's never happened before. So if we can satisfy FEMA and have a cake and eat it too, which does not have a very high wall that's going to block something, then everybody's happy.
I agree with Tom, but I also think we need to make sure that we educate them on this in the long term on what's going to happen. I mean, you've spoken to us many times about what's going on out here. I think it's really important that when we have this public meeting, that we educate the public on, so that they can ask. Well, FEMA has reiterated, FEMA reiterated just last week that they want private funds. Now, they can't force us to, but they could withdraw the funding in the wall portion. But the reason they do want that is because we can listen to a lot of, we have thirty thousand on the front end. I know there's been, there's been at least one, I don't know, thank you, I'm speaking, if you could, have a little bit about flood insurance. That's, that's a serious issue, so. I think the thing is, if we do flood protection, it's going to be five feet high in places. Because it was raised, but it'd be five feet. The question is, how can we make it acceptable and how do we, you know, we've got, last year, we had that thing, I think it was last year, that capacity for water use and the river grill, just got approved for a second story. It's not up there to look at the front cars, it's not up there to look at the river. And where do you see more of that?
And I don't think I'm repeating myself on this, but, you know, when we first started talking to FEMA and we hadn't talked to them directly, we're hearing through our consultants, it seemed like the wall, you, you couldn't have much human involvement in setting up the wall. It had to be either in place already as a solid wall or a mechanical, automatic mechanical device. And one thing that came out of our discussions during last week, including Friday's meeting, was no, you could have a three-foot in place, but then have the rest of it be manual. Now, you also have to have an operational plan and we have to figure out who's going to, who's going to do it, you know, and that's got to be accepted by us.
That as well.
Yeah, so, and hopefully it's just something you go down there and you just start, you know, flipping up the, the two-foot piece, you know.
I, I think we're, you know, we'll, we'll get huge pushback on the, you know, the larger, permanent, larger structure there. You know, you're going five feet off and that.
But it's, I think to Hoss's point, though, in reality, if we're able to keep the base wall to three feet, that's, that's only like six inches higher than the guardrail that's already there.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So we're kind of, you know, discussions of Luis though, we're kind of not at the same spot, but we were talking about the 11-foot wall, you know, with the ability to add on and it's very similar, you know, depending on what the engineers come up with.
And, and what we were hearing, though, you said that 11-foot wall or the three-foot is not an acceptable first phase.
Right.
They, they want the whole thing, so.
Which is why they seem to be interested in providing the additional funding.
Yeah.
Which is, which is really surprising.
You know, it, it helps that we're involved in some of these other projects because the person, we didn't know who you were going to talk to at FEMA, but it's one of the same, it was one of the same people that's in the Silver Jackets Grant Program that we're working on. And I introduced myself and he said, oh, I know you, Matt, from the Zoom call. Well, yeah, that's right. So it's kind of nice to have these, these contacts. And you don't have to start from square one, you know, every time you do a conversation. The other, the final point I'll make is that we were concerned with the 13-foot, 13.1 foot elevation wall, we would have to do something at Main Street to build up the sidewalk. And what they told us is when we get to that point, we can use a deployable wall. And there's several alternatives that we, well, at least, I guess, alternatives we looked at where you can just put out, you roll out something or another, either fill it full of air or fill it full of water or whatever, just to have it, you know.
And you're talking with the area behind.
In, in front of schooners.
Right, down against building and around, yeah.
So that's pretty cool, cool, because you don't have to, you know, build this huge structure or have steps coming from the sidewalk. Yeah, so that was, that was good news. And so we're just, we're just continuing to march on and, you know, as Bob mentioned, we'll have an agreement, or as George mentioned, we'll have an agreement for you to look at. As soon as I get it, I'll, I'll.
Say as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have any questions or anything?
So I got one, so what do you, or this is to George, when do you think we'll be talking about the other?
Well, I have told, I have told Jan that I'd like him to be prepared to do it on the third week in August. So coming up fairly quickly, as soon as possible.
It may happen at the end of September, definitely. You know what, that would spend a huge amount of time on something you interpret the public as like, oh, okay. You know, when you got that done.
I don't know, Hoss or the past, did you hear that?
Please, for me, please.
Okay, we're, we're looking at late August, early September for a public meeting.
I think the only thing I would consider, you guys know that better than me, is how that affects seasonal residents. But I think the sooner we do it, the better, so I, you know, your wisdom is good as mine. The, if I may just add a personal note, as you guys are talking, I am biting my tongue because every issue you're raising has been debated and talked long and hard and researched by the waterfront committee. And so it's like we're reinventing the wheel, so just, just know I'm being very patient and biting my tongue. All right. Daryl, is it, you with that?
I, I, I heard you. Well, we'll expect you to not bite your tongue at the public hearing.
Oh, I'm good at that.
I think the positive side of that, the positive side of that is that the issues have been vetted repeatedly, so we're?
Exactly.
Yeah, we, no one can say that we didn't exercise due diligence.
One thing I would like to say is that the committee eventually came down pretty much where I thought, Mark was a couple of months ago, when he said, let's get it done right the first time. At least that's the way I interpreted your comment. Egger. The, let's get it right the first time. The committee, after the study in 2014, became very focused on solving the problem, on fortifying the downtown so we would, we would have a viable commercial district as long as possible with sea rise. And doing it right. And that's, that was sort of like an overarching concern for the committee. And so in more recent months, that, that is the history that sort of colored their deliberations and their conclusions. But then we get, then we get the geotechnical risk report that, hey, what was suggested back in 2014 is not possible in terms of raising the level of the parking lot. We were going to raise it four feet. And it's not possible in terms of, and, and we're going to have to do a wall all the way down to bedrock because it's all slushy in there. Anyway, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Hoss. Any more, any questions?
That's it.
Oh, Jerry Page has, Jerry Sage has had her hand raised a long time.
Okay, well, yeah, just on the wall, Cherry, do you have a comment?
I do. I wanted to confirm that going with any portion of the wall being transparent will not add to the taxpayers' burden, either during construction or with all the future maintenance of it. The feedback, and again, we discussed it at length from the waterfront committee, was that a transparent portion of the wall was not a necessity and for the brief time that it might show the view is for somebody getting out of the car, standing up and walking into a store. If you do want an extended time of looking at the harbor, we're making a great park. And that is where, and it's a simple park, but it's still a great park. So I just want to, I don't understand why the transparency part keeps surfacing. However, I would like to ensure that if it's excluded, it will not be at the taxpayers' expense.
Good question. We'd have maintenance, all their maintenance, so it'd have to, it'd have to come out of the town budget at some point.
Yeah, we're going to have to do maintenance on it. We're going to have to make sure that those, whatever we use to, to make the wall taller when the flood comes, we're going to make sure that, we've got to make sure that that's ready to go all the time. So it is going to require some staff.
But we also remember, though, I think any added structure is going to have? But we also remember though, I think any added structure is gonna have maintenance over time, whether it's more or less that we can mitigate it, one thing, but anything. Add it in, you know, the design of the park is gonna have added maintenance and beyond the initial construction. So it's all stuff we have to factor in. But thank you, Cherry.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're going, I mean, just on that, we're gonna have a drainage system there that's draining, you know, all this dung from the fire, from the park. Someone's gonna have to clean out those drains to make sure the system still works. So, you know, we can't go into it thinking that we can build it and then it's gonna be maintenance free. It's just not gonna happen. But it's important to stress that upfront, I think.
It's a good question. We know what we're getting to long term.
Yeah.
It was important. We wanna move on to the restroom?
Yeah, restroom. You know, I've just heard positive comments. You know, if someone says they have a negative one, I say, don't tell me, but. No, seriously, I haven't heard any negative comments. We've got our, our maintenance protocols in place. I'll share those with you. They're in draft form now, but I'll, I'll send those to you. We've got, part of that will be if there's an issue on the weekend, a plumbing issue, mid-coast, energy systems will respond. I, I think it's, it's, you know, going pretty well. We've got some punch list items. They did put the, the partitions in, the permanent partitions in. We're, well, I need to say it aloud, we're still waiting on the lock system. But as soon as we get that, well, we're gonna do a walkthrough with the police department and the fire department and make sure that meets their, their criteria. And yeah, what else on that?
I got a question.
Yeah, yeah.
As the handicap person comes up around there, do you have those cables?
Yeah.
There's two of those that could be removed because they got sagging and not even working. Just concerned about the handicap people.
Yeah, I can't tell you how many times we've talked to, to Tidewater about that. They, they can remove those or they can put, what's it called? When they come up with a.
They've, they've already put in a spreader bar.
A spreader bar, but they need to either do a spreader bar on those two other cables or take them out totally. Because you're right, you can shake them back and forth. I've offered to go down there with a bungee and just pull them away.
They've been that way for years, but I think all of those overheads are basically taking up all of the force.
So, yeah, Mark, you're, you're right on point there. That, that is an issue for someone in a wheelchair trying to get around that, that corner.
So keep after them.
Yeah, we'll keep after them. They, they got the reasons why they didn't do it, but we need to get it fixed quick.
Are we keeping up with paper and everything? Everything's getting?
Yeah, we are. How much paper is used? It's, it's good because we can go through a weekend and only use one of the big holes and the, the other one's still a spare. But, yeah. But, yeah, we're seeing a steady stream. You know, we learned, we'd have to have trash barrels immediately accessible on the outside. We've learned a few things in, you know, the last couple of weeks, but.
Little original rubbish dumpsters, are those there currently? That are there on the.
I think those are from, those paving, they moved them around.
Those they open for the parking lines.
Yeah.
No, those are the, it's the green ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And have the things come in yet?
There's, today they haven't, at least as far as I know.
Maybe people like the jet or the sick sometimes.
You can save a few thousand, yeah. No, it doesn't look that great.
Any other bathroom discussions or any bathrooms?
Yeah, that's. That's worth, thank you. And upgrades to the, upgrades to the audio visual, you've already approved the amount as part of the grant that you just passed, and that, that equipment has been ordered. Lincoln, TV asked me, Lincoln County TV asked me if they wanted them, if they want me to have them here tonight. And I told them, no, we have, we have Evan, who's running the, the computer cell Zoom call.
Yeah.
So.
Does this, does this look, does this look like a hundred dollar job?
So we're on, yeah, we're on track for everything with them?
Yeah, we are. Yeah, just like they described.
Yep.
Let's see. And then the main municipal association, we have a ballot and I'm just asking you to raise me to complete the ballot. Let me tell you who the nominees are. Ellen Ellos, Chair of the Select Board in the Town of Solon. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, S O L O N. Vice President for the first, first year, one year term. And then the Executive Committee, David Seer from Frenchville, Melissa Doan, Town Manager, and Bradley, and Justin Horrye, Horrye from Chabique Island, Quebec. I'm not a mayor, that's next, it's a proper way. So, yeah, Quebec. So I, I'm asking if you would allow me to vote for those people.
Yeah, you want a motion?
Yeah.
I made the motion that we allow Matt to.
Any discussion? No, all in favor?
I believe we've got another hand on Zoom. Go ahead.
Somebody.
Hi, I just wanted to piggyback on my initial on the wall. We have discussed putting a mosaic diorama on the wall of the town's history of boat building. So it would not.
All right, Cherry.
All, it would also can be embedded in between Main Street and the park. So. This, Demers got it.
Thank you, Cherry. We're gonna move on from the wall for right now and we'll hope to see you all at the public hearing as soon as we have it. Bring your ideas along, please. Thank you.
Just to give you an update on tax commitment, I've been talking to Jim Murphy, who's the assessor for Newcastle and several other towns and, and one of the gurus in tax assessment. And he's helping us through tax commitment. And he's given some thought to, to who we can, who we can use or what firm we can use to fill that position. But we're set through tax commitment. The tax commitment will, will be August fourth. And then.
Matt, a question on that, wouldn't we, are you gonna have him run a couple different?
Yes, yes.
Kind of, what is, what was our overlay for this past?
Uh, there's, it was about, it was a hundred thousand something. And then, and then we're, yeah, I, I did a kind of a tentative preview with him just to give you something to start thinking, now, if we leave the tax rate at sixteen mils, we could do a hundred and three thousand overlay. So that's just something to keep in mind. It's, it's nice that we can keep it flat and thanks to the schools for that this time. So, but we'll have alternatives for you. And I'll have, I don't have it at the, right here, but I'll be able to tell you what the overlay has been for the last few years.
That's, that's, I just wanted to make sure we didn't think in that age, let's try to keep it either flat or try to go down.
I like.
Would be nice to. Not go far, too far down, but it's still.
Yeah, it's been going down steadily, but no, as we talked about, there's, there's needs out there to, to address and we can't let, let the infrastructure go or the maintenance go. I think we've got a good balance now.
To, when we do that, can you provide me information as to how many residents, taxpayer residents we run that have, because it seems to be the smaller areas.
It is, but unfortunately I was, I was disappointed that it's not reflected in the April first assessment, which is when they do, you know, when they actually do the county. So it's not as much as I would have hoped. Yeah. Yeah, and then I, you know, the only other thing I wanted to point out is that the, the survey work on Church Street, on the Church Street sidewalk project is nearly complete. The concerns that I have, that I talked to Andrew Hedrick about, were the closeness to the, even though we've got the right of way, I'm concerned about how close the, the sidewalk will come to the houses as you get up toward, toward Main Street. And the fact that we'd be taking out a stone wall and a tree and such. So what I asked him to do is see what it would take to move the street over at that. He said you'd have to do a box cut. You probably are familiar with that, but basically you rebuild the road for that, that section. And that, that would push it away, that would push the need, the sidewalk away from those, those, those residents. And, you know, the rest of the project, it's pretty, it's pretty good, well situated, especially because most of it is our, our cemetery.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I have to address the cemetery's concerns about, you know, vibration with the construction and all, but, but still, I think we're lucky in that regard. Yeah, the rest and all.
You never know.
Yeah, let's see, was there an additional item? Maybe that had to do with Miles Street. Yeah, so that's all I have.
All right, we'll move on to official action, action items at this point. You have anything else on?
Yeah, nothing else, man. Yeah, the, yeah, Animal Control Services Agreement, that's the same agreement we had in place for five years now. It's working well.
No changes there.
Now, we had a heck of a time finding an animal control officer prior to that. So now it, it seems to be working well.
Okay. Yeah, there are motion online.
I made a motion for doing the contract, Lincoln County, Animal Control Services, but this will be one of the two. We authorize Matt, we authorize USID or we authorize?
You're authorized, you need assignment. Mark seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Yeah, Miles Street, you saw the information on that. I forgot all the, well, maybe you want to put a motion on the floor first or? Yeah.
I guess, I guess.
Yes, put the motion out and then we'll discuss.
Due to the lack of funding, that, I guess I'll make a couple of comments. That we were, we were there under the assumption we had four hundred thousand dollars, which were the prior estimated costs from the engineer. We did not receive the current estimated projected cost of nine hundred thousand prior to going up to bed, that we didn't know. So. My estimation is, I had known it was nine hundred thousand, we probably would have delayed it to something. It's our own, yeah, our own issue. I'm kind of upset with myself. I'm upset with the engineer and I guess it's a learning experience for all, but it's not the bidder's fault. It's our, our end. So I think that price was competitive, but we just don't have necessary funding sources at this time. So I'm gonna make a motion to reject the bid for Miles Street.
I'll, I'll second the motion. Any discussion? You know, so what I've done is I've asked Andrew, I met with Andrew and Brooke Spats from the hospital yesterday, is the hospital thing happens. And at least they were until the price went up. So I met with them yesterday to talk about options. And one option is to significantly reduce the, the project scope to, to just, just reinforce the integrity of the causeway itself. So we would eliminate any work on the section of the road, half the road going up from where that, where the retaining wall starts. So going up toward Bristol Road, we could eliminate doing anything on that. We take out the sidewalk, we take the sidewalk out of the plans. By taking the sidewalk out, we get, reduce the amount of wall that needs to support what's gonna be the sidewalk. There's a few other items that we would reduce. And I, I thought we could get below four hundred thousand, actually cutting the project in less than half. But Andrew gave me a number this afternoon. I said I needed it by this meeting of his revised estimate. And it's, it's a five hundred and twenty seven thousand for reducing all, you know, eliminating all these items. So what I'd like to do is rather than have the board, you know, make any decisions on this, I'd like to get the, the Public Works Committee together. And, you know, we, we need to look at this and see what, what kind of recommendation you come up with.
Well, I think tonight we reject the bid, but we have to work with Miles because they wanna do the water line as well.
They wanna do the water line.
The whole scope of this project has gone out the window at this point. So.
Yeah, you have a water line and it definitely needs attention.
The water line, I need to say, it's not our issue, but the water, the off the cuff recommendation or estimate from, from Bert and Dorski yesterday was a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand.
So I'm sure if we get everything lined up for our end, you know, for what we need to do, that it could probably be piggybacking on what we're gonna try to do, if they're gonna put the water line in.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
You know, if we can work together around as well. So this, you know, like you said, we need to sit down with Public Works, but I just, I just, probably somebody could hear it before in downtown Demers, Scott, I wanna, so that you can handle it over a hundred thousand.
But that's, it was quite a big wall. You have a handrail that's three hundred and thirty dollars.
That's right, that's right.
I mean, this is.
Yeah, but even taking the handrail out, you know, some of these other things.
Think you'll have to bear it down?
Yeah. So, yeah, we'll have the, the Public Works Committee review it. I do wanna mention though, that I, I got the, the information from Bert and Dorski prior to my meeting with Public Safety and Accessibility Collaborative yesterday afternoon. And I told them, you know, we're looking at eliminating the sidewalk and they're very disciplined. And I said, well, you know, what we could do is eventually do the sidewalk down miles till you get to schooner and then you, you use the hospital sidewalk to long schooner. And, you know, I mean, that, that, that is not a, a very acceptable alternative to them. I heard a number of anecdotes about people almost getting hit and how people were speeding down miles. But just, you know, it's not a popular, it's not a popular decision. I mean, they understand the crisis.
I know it's not popular, but we've got a kind of control, we've got other priorities we can't, we've got other roles that are deteriorating that one has to be on two boats.
Yeah, I know, and they, they understand, they're just very disciplined. So just wanted to pass that along.
We did a motion, second. Yeah, I'll just, comment wise, I'll piggyback on Josh. Yeah, I was unfortunate with the late information coming that went out to, out to bid without all of us knowing the whole, you know, the full extent of it. So we, we'll work on that in the future. Any other discussion on this one online? Yeah, all right, all in favor? Motion? My understandings?
I'm gonna back up a second. I forgot to give Evan his, you said ten seconds of update, right?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to mention that I listed the electric vehicle chargers on a couple of different networks. The Department of Energy has a map and app system, and then there's three other private groups, Plug Share is one, Charge Hub and Charge Map. So hopefully there'll be some electric vehicles parked down there juicing up.
Yeah, you don't, we have to put the sign up.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's it. They got the, find the fencing curvings out of the way. We just gotta get the sign up. Then we can get our reimbursement. On the next item, I need to. On the next item, I need to change. I need to change what I had into recommendation, so Evan and I were working on this last week on the. So just as a reminder, on the coronavirus state local fiscal recovery funds, there's two pots of money. A huge pot of money that's counting a sitting on six point seven million, and that's the one they've been having these these meetings about. And I think some of you have gone to the those meetings. And then the second pot, which is much smaller, is the amount that we as a a. What's the term again?
Non entitlement.
Non entitlement, non entitlement town get directly from the state. And that amount is going up to two hundred and twenty seven thousand, was two fourteen, so. Just going back to where we were last week, I saw that the the states. Evan pulled this off, they needed to make, they they were supposed to get the money out to the towns in these non entitlement. Towns earlier, sometime early July, and now they're asking for an extension. Which they'll probably get to do at August fourth, well, I thought, gosh, we gotta get a, you gotta get a plan in place for spending this money. Because it turns out, we don't need to do that yet, so that's why I'm saying, I'm taking back what I said in the town manager notes. They're just gonna mail us at least part of the money. Transferred via electronic checking, they're gonna get us the money, and we don't have to prove that we. We show it, we're that we're gonna spend it on a an eligible item until later. So they're gonna give us the money to put in our bank account, but then when we spend it, we have to make sure it's one of those items in that list that I I sent you. As you're part of that document, so. The action I'm gonna ask you to take tonight is to set a date for a special town meeting. We don't need to have a special, I don't believe we need to have a special town meeting, because the. And on the annual town meeting warrant, the town meeting gave you the authority to direct how. Rent funds are to be spent, to accept those funds and spend those funds. But I just think, given the visibility that this has had, it would be good to have on record. The citizen, what, and you know, here are citizens' ideas on how they feel this money should be spent, once they hear. What the different categories are, well, you know, my bias is to use it. To defray what we think is gonna be the cost of the, you know, waterfront. But let's let's, my my suggestion is, let's hear what the others, other people think about how that money can be spent. Within those defined areas, so I am asking you to set a, a special town meeting. Becky, our lot of gave me the cheat sheet here, a special town meeting for September first, twenty twenty one. That gives us plenty of time to get the word out on on what the the issue is, what the alternatives are. And that, you know, and then post the warrant for August twenty fifth. You know, in the meantime, we could, we could certainly get out the news, and I can send it in a newsletter. What the, what the different options are, they are limited though, I mean, there's definitely a bias. To broadband and to some level, we we won't qualify, just like. The folks that attended the session I went to at the county, we won't qualify for lost revenue, because we didn't lose anything. But there's other areas where you can support the citizens who may have had, you know, a negative impact. Financially from COVID or businesses, same deal, so there are other choices, which is limit on capital, which is very limited. And which is unfortunate, because we could, we could spend it in a dozen different places if we had the option. Okay, so that's what I'm asking for, is a motion for a special town meeting on September first.
So do we have to have a public hearing on that?
On the special town meeting, no, no, we don't, no, because it's not in ordinance.
What do you think the warrant article was going to work with?
Well, what you do is you have, the hearing is part of the special town meeting.
Right, but if you have a, if you post in your agenda, a special town meeting, what would a warrant?
Oh, what would it say, what would it recommend, you know, what would we recommend?
It can't be open ended.
But with that said, I don't wanna see us going for an audit in three years and have to actually pay that some money. Because we didn't spend the time to make sure we're doing it right, like we said, it's limiting on all of this money.
As soon as we get a contact person at the state, we're gonna run our idea by them. And make sure that we, we, you know.
Yeah.
Just from, yeah, just from the summary, they they still have, just have. The long winded answer, they have, they just still have this interim rule, so we don't know exactly what those rules would be, other than what they gave us at that.
Yeah, so you're buying a specific product, specific project.
But yeah, we need to make sure before we spend the money, that it's eligible for reimbursement. It's eligible for, you know, with the criteria, so we will have already received the money. The state is currently looking for a consultant to assist them in divvying up this money to. You know, how many US allies do we have, four hundred and fifteen, or wherever it is, so they're looking for a consultant to figure all that out. According to what Cheryl was able to find out today, it's gonna be October before we actually get the check.
We just need to make sure, yeah, that the money comes in, it sits, doesn't touch, it touches, one hundred percent sure.
But Josh is like. I think we could get away with just having a public hearing and then having the board decide.
So I I, if you do a special town meeting, it's gonna be fine, you know, how you spend it, and if you bring in the public, they wanna do something different.
Well, what you could do is you could have the public hearing two weeks before the. Special town meeting.
Or if you just wanted to wait until the fifteenth, get more information.
I get a question, if we have a public hearing, do we have to have a special town meeting after that?
We don't, that's what I'm saying, it just. Yeah. Well, it just, that was the recommendation from MMA, but they. I don't know that they're aware of our warrant article that says that the board has the authority.
Did you say, we have a public hearing and you had participation from the towns before, and then the board decides which.
It's not even, no, it's not even a requirement, they haven't had participation, but I think it's just. So let's just, can we still use the date of of September first, is that our? Regular meeting must be, huh?
Also, yeah, it must be, and.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have some ideas as to how to do, and talking to the state, getting their approval, more or less. So when you have a public hearing, that's.
Well, here it's in, it's in, it's listed in here, you know, there's the five categories, and then. The document I sent you, which I know was a long document, it gives you a laundry list.
But what I'm saying is, going into the hearing, we're gonna have a series of recommendations, just how we think it ought to be, right?
That's right, yeah, well, I mean, you know, my recommendation is to use it towards stormwater. And then, you know, the other capital priority is. It's broadband, but if I'm reading this, and I shared this in in my narrative. But it says here, for capital projects and broadband, so water, sewer. Stormwater and broadband, the project has to have been in the planning stages. Yeah, one month early, so unless that changes, we don't have. Criteria in terms of capital improvements.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, yeah, so. All I'm saying is, before you have a public hearing and open up. Everybody's two cents, we have to have some idea of what we're gonna do, and give some guidance, right?
Yeah, well, I think.
I was gonna, I was gonna provide in in layperson's term, terms, before that hearing, long before that. That hearing, what the the options were. Some of which we don't qualify for, but. Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, these are, this is what the federal government says you can use it for, these are the items that seem to apply to our community.
Yeah, I'm getting back to what I think, is the board.
Oh, yeah.
Are we going to discuss that and come up with our own consolidated view of what you wanna suggest that the hearing? We, just like.
You know.
Okay, yeah. If it's the only, if you're only limited to the, one one thing that qualifies.
For capital improvements, but you could do public health, which includes vaccinations and testing, tracing. You know, you've got a huge percentage of our population, unbelievably high, that has already been vaccinated, you know, unlike. Most of the rest of the country, so I don't know that you need that, we don't need first round protective equipment. You know, as as a town, you wanna do mental health services or substance, I mean, these are the types of.
It makes sense to focus on what we already have going on.
Yeah.
Use it to offset the.
But someone may, someone may say you need to focus on this public health, or some of the negative economic. Impacts, my thought on on those, and I know what, you might have that discussion now, or maybe you could have that at a future meeting. But my thought on the negative impacts is, we're only dealing with two hundred and twenty seven thousand. I don't wanna be in a position of having to administer some type of health program for either businesses or. Or citizens, I mean, this is just a huge administrative cost, if the county wants to do that with some of their six point seven million. You know, have at it.
Well, that, to me, what you just said is, is part of what we would say in the public hearing, to explain why our recommendations.
Right.
But I think that ought to be planned out.
Okay, would you, would you like to take a little more time? And then give me some feedback on where you think we could gear in this to me some.
Yeah.
You know, I don't see how broadband, you know, we don't have the planning in place. So unless the rules change, I don't know how we could use it for that.
Right, yeah, so we're.
So limits us on.
The benefit for the taxpayers, all taxpayers at this point, is.
You could give, another option is you could give public sector employees who were involved in COVID. You know, during that period, in critical positions, you could give them a bonus. I don't see that's necessary, I don't, you know. We gave employees, I'm not trying to discount the role they had, but we gave employees laptops to do work from home. The police department took precautions, but they didn't, you know, have to do anything extra. Or, you know, I hope they don't listen to this tape, you know, I'm not recommending a bonus for employees.
If we wanna benefit, oh, yeah, you know, always credit out over that project.
I get a question, as far as Miles, was that already been designed for, is there a power to that?
No, no, I wish it could be, but I'm looking at infrastructure, it doesn't, you know, we've got a coal first thing. Goes under Schooner and 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 Miles, but that's minimal. And then there's the drainage pipe that goes between the pond and Dave's Cove. But that's, that wasn't even gonna be replaced as part of this project. Yeah, I mean, that did cross my mind that potentially you could see if they, if the the feds would allow us to use it. For the water system on private, you know, it's privately owned. That would pretty much take care of the, of the amount. That's stormwater too, but you see, we don't, we don't have the plans in place yet, that's why I'm thinking.
Well, how far, these construction plans, is that what they say?
It's pretty ambiguous, but March third or whatever the date in March was, seemed to be the cutoff.
Yeah, it says that the. The recipients may use these award funds to cover costs incurred for eligible projects planned or started prior to March third. Twenty twenty one, I guess the case is. Yeah, I guess the, I mean, how, we don't have the plans yet from academia.
Well, I, either way, so you know, we have two projects that are already. Stormwater, we have parking lot, we have Miles Street. We have costs associated with those, planning already in place, designs, you know, if you, I'm guessing if you apply it to a new project. Some of that's gonna be funneled off into planning and, you know.
As long as you can show documentation, it wasn't for that.
Yeah, yeah. Seem to make sense that.
The other point that, yeah, from, yeah, Mark, is that we we, you know, that water, lime replacement. It's very been discussed, you know, I've tried to connect the hospital and the water, but, you know, they really haven't engaged in the conversation on that. So you can't say that that was planned.
Yeah.
So I guess we got, we got some potential. You know, if we don't have to decide, as long as we show the documentation back, correct, the whole side of this project.
So we still, we proceed with a, a hearing? Yeah, I can say, yeah, just. Next point here is that when we do the warrant, it's gotta be a specific directive, can't be. Have a special town meeting and have it open.
So if you go through the special town meeting, you have just a public hearing, it's a work.
Yeah, that gives us a lot more flexibility, so we we explain to the citizens. What the federal guidelines are, what we could benefit by as a town under those guidelines. And then say, you know, what would you like us to do?
Okay, well, I mean, just this discussion, I think.
Okay, so, so would you like, should we come back of where a future discussion or maybe add it to a workshop? And what you'd like to recommend to the citizens of public hearing and part of a public hearing?
Well, the thing you talked about too, the waterfront project and the underwater project on Miles.
No, did you mean Miles or did you mean? Church?
Miles, Miles Street.
Well, if you said we could do like Culver on Schooner and.
Yeah, potentially you could have an improvement there.
Definitely needs to be done.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, that's, that's in the plans already.
Question for that, you could do a portion for waterfront.
Right, okay.
Really, yeah, you could buy one of those projects, it's gonna be offset.
Funding on the waterfront project is still up in the air, right?
We don't know what the bids are, we don't know what the cost is, right?
But this other thing is the P D T, right?
Well, when we can finally get the, the work done at the Miles Street, now.
There's nothing to cover that right now.
Well, we have the four hundred thousand set aside, but it's not enough to cover it. It's, yeah, you're right, yeah.
So that sounds like a good candidate.
Yeah, I don't know how much is. We don't know how much is the culvert, how much the culvert part of the cost, but. It's probably not a small change. Culvert pipe. I'll find out, I'll find out with that part.
And Matt, you said, at this point, we don't have like a direct contact with this.
We don't have a direct contact with the state yet.
So we can't say, hey, this is what we're gonna use it for.
That's right.
Yeah, you know, we didn't technically sign on the.
Well, all we have is what's in the federal guidelines. Well, all we have is, looks in the federal guidelines.
Yeah.
And then, and then we have, we have MMA's interpretation of the federal guidelines, and then, uh, Evan was able to pull up. The National League of Cities interpretation of the federal guidelines, but the base documents.
Question, Matt, how long can you set on that money?
Uh, till. It's a twenty four or twenty more.
Yeah, twenty twenty four.
Twenty four, yeah, and then.
The first annual report, I think, has to go out October twenty twenty two.
Yeah, that's the report on how we're spending it, but the project itself has to be. I think, it seemed like, when I read this, it was, uh, twenty twenty four, but then in the National League of Cities, it seemed like. The information that I was reading gave me, seemed like there was a possibility for extinction, too. We'll have that money, it'll be long for on it, also for us.
There'll be two, there are two or three pandemics after this one.
Twenty six.
Okay, the project has to be under twenty four, but the expenditure is twenty six. Yeah. Yeah, we should follow up on those two options, so we can apply it.
So do you want to do a public hearing for the first, Matt?
Yeah, that'll give us a chance to nail down some of these things. And then, so the, the, uh, direction from the state and the feds, and then also to publicize it.
We need a, a motion for the public hearing for the September first and that.
Yeah, if it doesn't work out, we know it's canceled. I'm making a motion for a public hearing for, how you wanna put this. Corona virus state local fiscal recovery funds application, or on how we would proceed with the funds.
Wait a second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Time to study up on a little bit more. Um, that's all we had under official actions, and anything else on the list? No, you're there, okay. All right, how about, so what was discussion item, sorry, down the end of your tongue?
No, I think I've said enough already.
We're asking questions, this is. Uh, we'll break down a line, Mark?
Stick a little up and piggyback on, um. I promised to say the only thing I let you do that, is nice to see the project of the bathrooms, downtown, it's, um, how many people are using it? And I just wanna make sure that we're still on topic.
Um, I don't have anything more to add this evening.
I just wanted to add one thing, I wanna thank the other courts for filling in that hole on School Street. It's, it's been resolved, you must have something.
Yeah, control, is that not?
When you're turning right coming from parks on.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah. It's in the state right away, but a lot of times we'll go ahead and just.
Yeah, I mean, somebody with a bicycle and hard to like make that.
Oh, boy, yeah.
So a workshop that is off, not even.
Uh, yeah, we're gonna take a loose note here, so we'll, we'll table that, um, do we have, uh, next week? Yeah, we have a workshop the next.
We had a workshop on the, uh, charter, uh, potential charter changes, uh, for them, so we can, you can combine them.
We could, yeah, is that fair enough, everybody?
I don't know, I'm working on it, I got a whole piece of.
I know the board didn't wanna wait too long to do the goals.
Yeah, so, well, let's just, it's all the same, everyone, we'll just do it, we'll piggyback them and.
And, uh, I have copies if you want, those, hard copies, and then of the goals, the draft of the goals. And, and then, uh, you notice I gave, uh, you more responsibility this time around, you know, there's a lot of selectmen, word select. So look at that, it's gonna be a transition year for the town in some respects. The W.
Yeah, you've been retired before.
I thought I was gonna retire ten years ago.
You can have this one, cause I brought my own.
So if we combine those two.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's. Yeah, we can plan, we can plan on it, if it goes over, we'll, we'll move it along, but we should.
Yeah, get, get started in my next meeting, so.
I'm making a motion on your agenda.
Wait a second, I'll say, no seconds, uh, any discussion, all those in favor? Okay, thank you, your motion carries.
Thank you, Evan.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you, everybody.